Call to order this the Monday, May 24th, 2021, meeting of the Ellisville Town Council. Chief, can you lead the pledge?
Mike, you come up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the wicked sand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Marshall, prayer.
Our Father, we come before you to see again, we ask your blessings on the whole community, we ask your blessings on the employees we have, we ask you to be with us throughout the meeting, lead United, clear our minds that we can make the right decisions, the right way, at the right time, at the right, at the right, everything Jesus says.
Amen.
Coleman, I didn't realize it got on there.
My apologies, I had a little trouble getting connectivity, so we're good now.
Sandy, call please.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
Okay, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, May 10th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for May 2021.
Your second?
I think William did.
I did, second.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, William, I'm fighting a couple of technical problems going over here.
No worries.
All right, Sandy, you have motion and a second.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Abstain. I wasn't present.
Dan Swafford?
Abstain, wasn't present either.
Motion carries.
Okay. Action, pay accounts payable vouchers and the payroll.
I'll move to pay accounts payable and payroll.
Second.
Motion is second, Sandy.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, for the general public and the council, we have no resolutions tonight, no ordinances on first or second reading, no old business, I don't think there's a flood report, is there, Mike?
There's not.
Okay. Under new business, skipping to that, we have a request for release of erosion control bond for Ruby Creek.
Good evening. The erosion control bond for Ruby Creek was to cover silt fencing and mulch seeding during the grading portion of the subdivision, they have since sold all the lots and all the common areas have been completed, so the developer Phil Tapp is requesting that the 5,400 erosion control bond be released.
And everything has been completed to be required of that bond, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Questions from the council? Kevin, are there any of the petitioners here at all to speak?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Seeing no questions and no comments from the petitioners, is there an action from council?
Make a motion that we release the erosion control bond for Ruby Creek.
Second.
Second, Sandy.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next is the fire department request to hire three full-time firefighters. Chief Foreman.
So, thank you. I have given job offers to three individuals, and with your permission, I'd like to promote them from part-time to full-time pending the, excuse me, the offers that we've given them, and that would be for Brandon, Monday, Tre- Levi Parish, and Garrett Knowlton. These people were, went through a vetting process, and that's who we picked these, for these positions, they are positions that are already funded, replacement of Raymond Worthing, Mike Stalkup, and Tyler Barker. Tyler Marder, excuse me.
Okay, there are questions from the council? Is there an action from the council on these personnel hires?
I'll make a motion to approve, request, I'm sorry, request to hire three full-time firefighters.
Second.
Motion in the second, Sandy.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries. Scott, I wanted to say, I'm sorry, I did not put the meeting, virtual meetings on this agenda, I didn't get that carried over, but it was an unresolved issue, I think.
Right, and I figured we will talk about that here under supervisor comments, council comments here in just a moment.
Okay.
Um, with that said, is there privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council right now that's not a part of our normal agenda, and again, we plan to address the virtual versus in-person meetings here shortly, so if you'll hold those comments for that section. Seeing none, we will move to supervisor comments, and why don't we just start the discussion right now, if you don't mind, about the virtual versus in-person meetings with Mr. Farmer?
Yes, I believe that it may be time to move to in-person meetings again, the town hall had a quiet opening, and our doors are open now, and so it's almost business as usual at the town hall, so I do believe with some of our other government counterparts and businesses in Monroe County as well as the state, it seems like it'd be a good idea to open to in-person meetings again.
Council comments concerning this issue?
I agree with Mike, I think it's time we open for public meetings.
I'm, Scott, I'm also good with it, I think, I think we did the responsible thing, we didn't move too quick, with the county opening up, I feel pretty confident that we're ready to do still also.
I guess my question, Mike, and not to cut you off, the end, I'm sorry, did you have something? Okay. Are we prepared to do the hybrid style meeting, or at this point are we just going to be limited to in-person only? Because I know there's
Danny, go ahead.
I think that we can accommodate, I mean, it's going to be a little bit of trial and error, we have done some training sessions with the employees for insurance, and had the Zoom meetings on the big screen, so all of the Zoom participants will show on the TVs, and the only thing is, the council will be in a large group, you won't have your individual screens at the council meeting, but the public will be able to hear you and see you, and they can still, during public comment, or when requested, make, ask questions, Kevin Talati has agreed to kind of host the meeting for me, he will just switch his spot from his normal seat to the computer, and I think we can make it work, it may not be seamless, but I think we'll get there.
Okay. And you'll have to forgive me for the question, but are we prepared somehow, since the public meeting, to record both the in-person and the web presence, to make a recording of both?
Well, yes, I've always recorded the in-person meetings, and Zoom has that option to record the Zoom meetings, and then, of course, we'll have the backup with cats.
Okay, excellent. All right. Any other council comments concerning this? Probably should entertain a motion concerning when we return to that, which I think we're all believing is the next meeting, correct?
And that is June the 14th.
We already made a motion at the last meeting for that.
Okay. All right, I apologize, I didn't remember that we did that. All right, so is there other supervisor comments, and Mike, I don't want to cut you off if you've got more.
Yes, a couple items. I got a call from the general manager at Kihei, and they have, currently they have a sign in front of their business, and it's a very small 56 square feet sign, it's very innocuous, and, and, you know, it's, it, it sets low to the ground, and they wanted, they have the water tank behind that, and they want to put up an additional sign on their, I mean, literally put it on their water tank, Amber, do you have a picture of that? Is Amber here?
Yes, she's getting it.
Okay, so this is the first picture, and as you can see, the sign's pretty tame, as far as signs go, and it actually says now hiring underneath it, the problem is, you know, they have the large building in town, and their road frontage is only 147, their signage that they can have for their business, Heck Sitco or Chad's, Chad's Garage probably has more road frontage than they do, so their new sign is 220 square feet, but with the, with the 56 feet they've already used on the, the entrance sign, their total frontage only allows her 221 feet, so they cannot put their sign up as is, now, they can make it smaller, but considering the circumstances, the unique circumstances, I asked Kevin meet the code, and I respect that, but this is a very unique situation where the largest building in our town has the smallest road frontage, probably one of the smallest road fringes in town along the highway, so I asked if we could, you know, make a waiver for that on their behalf, and it has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, well, they have to put a $300 fee down to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they did not ask, but I wondered if it wouldn't be appropriate just to waive that fee, I'd be willing to walk it through myself as far as asking for the waiver, and I, but I need the board's approval, and I want to know what they think. I think Kevin has a few things to say about it, we talked about it today, and it doesn't meet code, and there's cost of doing appeal, so Kevin, if you want to chime in, I mean, I respect what Kevin told me today about the situation, so I just want to know what the board thinks.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, and yeah, I have talked about this with Mike Farmer quite a bit today, and a little bit Friday. Basically with Kihei, they want to put signage up in excess of what's allowed by town code, which is based off of frontage, it is also capped at, capped at 200 square feet, so they would have hit the cap regardless. This is precisely what our Board of Zoning Appeals is for, for cases such as the situations like this that don't fit neatly into zoning. There's always going to be something you can't fit in, and I think this is perfect for the board to hear, I am completely in agreement, they probably should be allowed more signage than what our code allows, but again, no easy way to get that in code. I do disagree on waiving the fee, however, I I realize that Kihei has not asked for that, I will say we have already waived, I believe, $1,000 worth of fines for other issues of signs and a couple other things already this year. The filing fee for the BZA goes to cover the cost of the publication, which the town takes care of, and also for our board members' time, as well as mine and Denise's time to prepare for the meeting and attend the meeting. I, I just, I don't see the need to waive the $300 in this case, and that's, that's where me and Mike disagree.
Questions from the council?
In this case, I would take, I lean to, with Kevin, I think that, one, I, I support fully the BZA handling this, that's what they're designed to do, and, you know, it's I, I think the $300 fee is not overtaxing for Kihei.
Other comments or questions? Okay, I'll ask mine, two things if I can, Kevin, as I understand the ordinance, the sign ordinance, is that, for want of better words, our ordinance, or is that a planning zoning commission passed ordinance?
It, it went through the planning commission, probably the last couple of years.
But did it have to be ratified by the council?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, I strongly believe we have erred with this particular ordinance, basing it on frontage alone, because I can tell you that because Kihei has very little frontage, and the fact they lack a big enough sign is creating some serious traffic issues for people trying to find Kihei, but they've got a very little sign, again, based on the sign ordinance, it hasn't having a small sign. I think we've erred here, I, I, I can understand the reasoning behind the sign ordinance, I know there's been some challenges to sign ordinance in other communities, some have gone well for the community, some have gone poorly, but perhaps we need to revisit this, not only basing it just on road frontage, but also basing it on size of the building and/or traffic coming and going, and I don't know what all factors we want to include. My next question is, this, this is reflective of the sign only, correct?
Yes.
So if they just paint the water tank Kihei that size, we really have nothing in it?
If, as long as it doesn't have Kihei written on the tower, no.
So if they did, wait a minute, if they painted Kihei on the sign, or Kihei on a water tank bigger than what the sign ordinance is, that would be in violation of the sign.
I mean, the way our code's written, that would be considered signage.
Again, my proof that we have erred with this ordinance, that's ridiculous, that's beyond ridiculous, that we even concern ourselves with what somebody painted, what colors, where, and the size of it, I get the sign if it's including other things, but the water tank's sitting there, it's not going to move. So again, council, I think strongly we should look at this ordinance and make the necessary adjustments, I don't care one way or another about waiving the fee, that's, I, I leave that to others more learned than I am with this, I'm just saying this ordinance is ridiculous in the way it's written, and the way it's going to be enforced.
Consistent with all of the comments on ordinances, I would agree with Scott.
Sorry, one last point, because I will guarantee you, we are in violation of our own sign ordinance, because we've got town of Ellisville written on a water tank, and I'm sure it's bigger than 220 square feet. Absolutely positive of it. So if we can do it, why can't they, other than the fact we're the government? So I think this ordinance, and Sandy, if you wouldn't mind, can you put this on next agenda, please, so we can start looking to make adjustments?
I will try my best to remember.
Okay. I'll send you to that. So what's
Yeah, I agree with you totally on the just clarification, the sign ordinance, I think we need it to protect ourselves and other things, but I totally agree, if they're painting it on their actual water tank, I don't feel that it's really a sign issue, but I do feel we need the ordinances in place just to protect this.
No argument.
Okay, so, so you're, you're at the same feeling I am, it's on their water tank, so it shouldn't be considered a sign.
Yeah, but I also think we need to look real strongly at addressing, if we're basing on road frontage alone.
Right.
Couple of very small businesses down there, they've got immense frontages, but we have a very large business with a lot of truck traffic, that people are getting confused as how to get in and out of the place, because we're limiting their sign based on their driveway length, their driveway size, we need to have some ability, and maybe it should have been borne out with planning whenever they put the, put the thing in to begin with, planning should have started waiving some things, but I don't think anybody would have thought about it by then. We need to make some adjustments in the ordinance to not just base it only on road frontage, and give planning commission and other people a little more leeway.
Right, and, and I, and I totally see this as growing pains, I really do, I think as the town grows, there's going to be other issues come up like this, so.
I absolutely agree with you, and I think as the town grows and expands, particularly in different larger sectors like this, why continue to create the pain force when we've already seen it once, create the minutia, create the paperwork, let's just fix it, or try and fix it, we can't fix everything, but clearly this is going to happen again.
I agree, I, if, we can look at it, but okay, I just want clarification on what you were saying.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. Any other questions or comments about this? What's the council's pleasure on waiving the fee?
Well, I, I got another question, how, how pending is this issue, if we are going to change the code, don't you think if they can wait, that maybe they can wait until then, or do we still need to go back to the thing, is it an actual sign, and if we take that out of the ordinance, if they're painting on their building or whatever? Mike, I guess just tell me, are they in a, in a big hurry to do this?
Well, no, I never got that from them, you know, a couple other things, the sign's already made, and I don't think they realized they wouldn't be able to put it up, and so they're thinking about making a smaller one, but they really like to use the sign they have, so they nev- and I'll repeat, they never asked me to waive the fee, but just everything I know about it, trying to do town business, trying to be good partners with people like Kihei who's coming into town and has already shown their generosity to the town in ways I'll not get into yet. I just, it was something I suggested, and, you know, if, if you don't waive the fee, it's nothing to me, but no, I don't think we're in a big hurry, but what Scott said's true, the sign they have up is small, and as you go by it 55 miles an hour, and you're in a truck, if you've never been there before, I mean, their return drivers know where to go now, but if you put that size sign that's going to be on the tank out, and, and only use one sign and, and met the ordinance, the line of sight would have been a hazard, so, you know, I think it was well thought out by them on how to put signs up, but they're, like I said, it's a unique situation, it's really nobody's fault, and, and, you know, the irony is, the building sits way back off the road, it tucks into the landscape that looks real good, and, but it, it's hurt them being able to put a sign up where you can find out how to get there. Plus, I will, I will say, I, I'm, I'm impressed that below the sign, and it's, it's now hiring, so, you know, I think there might be some reason to believe they're like to get it up sooner than later, because they're trying to hire some people.
Hey, Mike, another quick question. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, on that, is that a, like a banner, is that what the sign is?
Yeah, I don't think, it, it just goes on her, it's like a sticker, I think, Kevin, do you know?
I do not.
Because, Kevin, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but it kind of looks like a banner, and then that would fall under like temporary signage, correct?
I mean, if it's something they plan on having temporarily, then they could, yeah.
Because I know we, we've had this happen before, several years back, if it was a banner and temporary signed, I don't think it actually even falls under the, the sign ordinance, but I may be wrong, it's been a while.
Well, to be, to be clear, I'm pretty sure they want this sign up for a long time.
Sure, but I was just thinking, maybe there's a loophole.
Scott, I'm all for changing it, but if previous experiences this council has shown me, it, originally we all kind of expressed some type of thought on changing something, then when it got the rubber met the road at the last minute, we did a U-turn and didn't do anything, so I, I'd be hesitant to hold off on action in hopes that we change it, because the night that we vote to change it, something could come up we haven't thought about, and no one's brought up since, and derailed the whole thing.
Well, and I don't think that we're necessarily going to wholesale change it, I just would like to see us at least take a good look at it publicly and get public input and opinion, I mean, quite frankly, if I'm Kihei, particularly after hearing some of the things, and not that we're, they were really bad here, but quite frankly, it becomes very petty, I'd paint Kihei on my building in about 30-foot tall letters, and just be done with it, but that's not what they're asking for.
Agreed.
So it's just, it, again, I'll let it go with that.
I hear you, and I agree, Scott, I just know how difficult it can be to
Yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, William, please understand, it's just
This frustrates me.
It is. It is.
And again, I'd like to reiterate, with the BZA, we have the ability to send it through them, and I think that everybody's, you know, from what I'm hearing, was willing to do that, which will take care of this situation pretty quickly, the whole question is, do you want to waive the fee?
Well, again, Sandy, don't get me wrong, I think BZA is the proper form for this one, I'm just trying to prevent it from ever having to go to the BZA in the future, and other one like this, there's no reason that we should saddle BZA with modifying our ordinances just because we couldn't see the end of next Tuesday. So. So is there any motion about fees at all, or are we going to waive that, or are they going to stick with what they're doing, again, I'm, I'm open for you guys. Okay, Mike, I guess that's the guidance that we can give, is that there's no intent to waive the fee, and Kihei can proceed as they see fit, whether they want to go to BZA, or they want to hold off and see if we do anything.
Okay, that's fine, didn't hurt to ask, I have another issue, actually, it's not an issue, I believe in the past, board members have said they want to be aware when we apply for grants, anything where we might end up needing some money, or there'll be action taken in the future, they'd like to be they would like for it to be known when we are working with any kind of grant project, so, with that said, IU Health is, they have a grant out, it's $2 million, and it's for trail projects, and we had a lady from IU Health representative, meeting with them, and we are considering, we, we did a letter of intent with them, and we'll know if we will be invited to actually write a grant for the money, now, Owen County, Monroe County, Parks, Town of Spencer, and Ellisville have all been working together, and we've had a couple of productive meetings, even if this project fails, I think we've started the, the collaboration that will sooner or later result in some success, getting some trails, and maybe even other projects with the amount of cooperation I've seen so far in the two meetings, but I'm just making you aware of it, we not spent any money, just some time talking, and we, we did, we did send out a letter of intent, actually, Owen County wrote it and sent it in on all of our behalf, and if anybody's really interested in the long drawn out details, or where we think we may go, this, this trail grant eventually could end up tying us to McCormick's Creek, McCormick's Creek Schools, Flatwoods Park, into Ellisville, and of course, the cars trail back into, through Monroe County towards Bloomington, I think eventually the ultimate goal would be to tie it into both the YMCA and Spencer, they're working on, or in on another grant for that, and with the YMCA on Northwest, or, yeah, Northwest Bloomington, so it's pretty, it would be a pretty big project, it's pretty exciting, so anybody interested, get ahold of me, and I could actually drive the route, we think my work. That's all I have.
Other supervisor comments? Chief?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
And Chief Foreman?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Hedy?
I'm good, thank you.
And Mr. Talati? And Mr. Talati?
I don't have anything.
Okay, moving from that, council comments?
I don't have anything.
None there, I guess we're down to a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM.